For invocation, we have Pastor Kim Gabbard with Impact Church. If you would please stand for prayer and the pledge immediately follow.
Will you pray with me, please? Our precious heavenly Father, we just come before your throne tonight, God, and we just thank you for another day. Father, we thank you so much for even the rain because it reminds us that you are in control of everything around us. So, Father, we thank you so much for our little town of Ironton and, Father, for the people that reside here, Father. So, I pray as we go into this meeting, God, I just pray for guidance, I just pray for wisdom. I just pray that you will just pour your wisdom over us, Father, so that we can help those that live here to just live their very best lives, Father. We love you so much and we just pray all of these things and may you get all the glory from anything that happens here tonight, and amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please, Mark.
Larry, Amy.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Colin.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Harry.
Okay, Bob called yesterday and his wife, just wanted for the record, Bob's wife had a surgery. He wanted to be with her because he hadn't known how, you know, post-surgery medication would feel. So, he called me yesterday and Chris had a meeting, he may show up halfway through, I don't know, but he had a meeting and said he got backed up. So, he is not using one sexually. Next, on the agenda's approval of amendments, we have the regular council meeting of February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the finance committee meeting of February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have any edits or additions, Craig?
Just one, the notice of the special meeting, the vice mayor's name is Chris Haney, not Craig Haney, he's the courier. I think Martha's mind was on me when she heard her co-girl with sporting announcements. It's all good.
Anybody else? Those minutes, amended minutes will stand as approved. Next, we have audience participation. We have an invited guest, Mrs. Julia Monroe with the LCPD. And mayor for a proclamation, if you guys would like to step up to the podium and...
Yes, with March approaching and developmental disabilities awareness month, I wanted to present a proclamation to our local DD. Whereas it is among the duties and responsibilities of the mayor to recognize and honor outstanding organizations and events. And March was proclaimed as National Development Disabilities Awareness Month by President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-seven to increase awareness about the contributions and challenges of the millions of U.S. citizens that have some form of developmental disability. And the Lawrence County DD program serves approximately five hundred individuals with developmental disabilities in Lawrence County, many of which reside or receive services in the city of Ironton. We acknowledge that all people are capable of contributing something to the community in the support of full inclusion of people with developmental disabilities in all aspects of the community living. Therefore, I, Sam Cramblett, Mayor of the City of Ironton, do proclaim March, two thousand and twenty-two as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to help make our community a place where everyone feels like they belong.
Thank you so much, and this is Lauren.
Hi, Lauren.
Hi.
We graduated again.
Oh, did you really? Okay, well, thank you so much for this and...
Check out these pictures.
Thank you so much, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate your word.
Thanks, Lauren.
Okay, audience participation, were any citizens like to step to the podium, state your name, an address, and issue?
It's over, he needs a little bit of time to get up here. He's coming.
It's raining.
Yes, it is.
Mine is hard too.
I don't recognize anybody's face, but I'm Rosetta Roberts, four-eleven South Ten Street in Ironton. And the reason I'm here is to complain. I am so frustrated and I'm tired after over fifty-some years trying to resolve problems that happen out on my end of town. And really, I'm asking to get some answers to some of the questions that I have. Don't understand, never have understand the reason why when certain area in Ironton comes down and complains. What I'm complaining about tonight has been going on since, I didn't want to shock you all and bring all of the stuff that I had down here. Nineteen ninety-eight, most recently. We all know where the steakhouse is, I mean, it's too little for everybody not to know where everything's located. You know where AT&T is, you know where Little Caesar's is, you know where the hospital is, the steakhouse, the parking lot that they've created across the street from the steakhouse, Holiday Inn. Then right across the street is Rosetta, me. I have been to the county commissioners, city of Ironton, not this new mayor yet, I haven't talked to him because from prior experience and the method of operations, you know, you can go down and he's not available. You have to come back later, we'll give you, we'll give him the message, and the message is never given. That's the city of Ironton, I've even went to the state highway patrol, not highway patrol, but the State Department of Transportation and complained to them. Why is it that when they get to that area right there at my house and all of those trees and water running down, destroying my property? How come you all stop right there and don't do anything? There's no culvert, no nothing, running my house, I've had two roofs put on that one house in the last thirty years because trees have fallen on top of the roof. And then when I call my insurance company, I pay the premiums, but I don't get the benefit. They just look at it and say, well, that's just because wear and tear. Yes, it's going to wear and it's going to tear anytime those big limbs are falling on top of your house. How come nothing is ever done with that section, cluster of trees in the back of my property? How come there's not a culvert in the back of my house? Yes, I'm upset, it's okay, it's okay, people get upset. I just want to know, what do I need to do to get somebody? I don't want somebody to drive out there in a city truck with their little lights twirling around, walk up and down the street for a few minutes, and then I never hear from them again. Go to the state, superintendent comes down, looks at the situation, yeah, you have a problem, and we have equipment called a giraffe. I don't care about their equipment, I don't, I wouldn't know how to operate it if they even showed it to me. Where they come in and they cut all of those trees down. Why has, if they have the equipment, why hasn't it been done? And that's the question I posed to him. He told me thirty feet down is the state. The rest of that area to your fence is the city and they have the right way. They say that it's the city's responsibility to correct the problem. The city says, oh, no, that's the state's responsibility to correct that problem. But in the meantime, Rosetta is right in the middle with her property being destroyed, basement getting wet, water standing in my basement, foundation being destroyed. What do I need to do to get some kind of a resolution or some kind of a answer to my problems?
Rosetta, I totally understand your frustrations, I don't know your specific frustrations, but there's a few of us on council that are pretty frustrated with ODIP ourselves because of the water runoff situation. The city takes on, that's a, we're all in agreement that that's a U.S. fifty-two state highway, you know, the ODIP takes care of, correct? The one thing they don't take care of is the runoff. They throw that on the city and right now, it's basically, you know, in days like today, it's putting our drains, our sewer and wastewater system at, you know, extremely high levels of water that we are treating that we shouldn't be. So, there's a few of us up here that have really, you know, said, what can we do with ODIP? They haven't given us any answers. I do want to ask our solicitor one question, and I want to ask you a question is, do we have, is there an opinion on that? How far down does the state have to take care of? And I'd like, do you have like a survey of your property?
I probably could get one because the turnabout or something is going through there and they had surveyed it recently. So, you know, I don't know, me personally, I could probably go down and get one.
Yeah, if, because I'd like to see that, is it thirty feet of?
Yeah, I don't know what it is at that particular place, but typically, the part of it that would be in the highway easement, we can't go around.
Right, right.
That's the part the city owns, I mean, if there's something we can do there. Our engineer maybe can look at it, and when he made the report to council, if you remember, when he was talking about the roundabouts, he was talking about the water issue and that they were going to try to address that when they did that work as part of that project. Isn't that right, Nate, if you remember him saying that?
Yeah, that was part of it, yes.
Now, whether that'll correct where she is, I don't know, but I think it's an engineer's going to have to go look at and say, here's where the boundary line is, here's the city's property, here's what we can do or not do to try to divert that water so it's not running on there around.
How did?
It could be as simple as a ditch or something, like she said, a culvert or something that would divert it. And I don't know if you have neighbors next to you that have the same problem or not.
Well, yes, if any, go from Green Valley all the way to the exit that goes into Coal Grove. If you were to look over the hill, there's only a certain area that's inundated with trees, debris, vegetation. Never, in the thirty years that I've lived out there on that part of the town, I have never seen anybody come out and take care of any trees except for the ones that threaten these businesses. Those trees are pruned and taken care of. I don't understand why across the street or right next to my property, they cleared it out to where they were able to make a parking space out of that. How did they get that parking space? If the city's not responsible for it and the state's not responsible for it, how did they get enough space for about fifty cars to park? Nobody's answered me.
Mrs. Roberts, I'm going to personally take that upon myself to research some of these. Now, I'm not saying I, because I don't have a law degree, I don't, the mayor wants to address you, but I will take that personally upon myself to research some of that.
As you, especially, you're right, everything you said about all the way from Green Valley down even past all the way up to Shake Shop almost, that was all being addressed in the most recent study that we did. The ODIP roundabout part, which was proposed to us, was to put in the piece that would connect across Park Avenue so we could build a pipe if that's where the direction we're going to go. But the ultimate goal is working with ODIP to divert all of that runoff into Storm's Creek eventually. The piece that you're talking about at the roundabout, it's a fifty-five thousand dollar thing for us to do, but then we can add on to it as far as wide as we need to. The tree part, it should be as simple as looking at the auditor's website and seeing where that easement for them ends and where ours begins to where that would become our responsibility, that should be able to be figured out pretty quickly.
How come it hasn't been done? This is, this is two thousand and twenty-two.
I didn't know about that, sorry.
Well, you're young.
Sorry, I didn't know, I didn't know.
I didn't mean it that way, but, you know, again, there's older people here that would be able to answer those questions. You're a young man and I appreciate your efforts. But I'm wanting to know, how come those issues have never been addressed?
It's something that we're working to address, and now that it about the trees too, I'll look right into that.
Okay.
I just need to get some contact information to talk with you.
Sure will.
Mrs. Roberts, I'm just straight out of the shooter, I've never heard anybody, I've heard about every complaint within the city, but that, I've never heard that issue, and I, you know, I'm a bad counsel, I apologize if you're going through that.
You know, I'm a straight-shooting person. Do you understand the reason why there's not? Look at your representation, do you wonder why there's not a minority in here? Because they know that there's nothing that's going to be done. You can come and complain, but there won't be anything done. You don't want me to start with examples?
I will look into this for you, I promise you that. I don't know if I've been in the past, but I promise you I will look into it.
Thank you, Anthony, and I don't be probably old enough to be a grandmother.
But the mayor is going to address that and I will personally research your area and what the guidelines are for that. So, I hope we can get this issue resolved for you.
Go all the way back to the fifties so you know I've been there, seen that, know that.
Like I said, this is the first time I've heard a lot of complaints, but this is the first time I've actually heard that issue come up, so.
Yeah, we all pay taxes, we all pay taxes and expect, you know, for our tax dollars to work just like anybody else's tax dollars.
I agree with you, I agree. So, anybody else have anything?
Thank you for...
I hope we can get this issue resolved in a time of matter for you.
I appreciate your time, I really do.
I appreciate you coming to this.
And excuse me for letting me sound off here, but I needed a sounding board.
Okay, I'm done.
I'm tired of it, I'm frustrated, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Tom Schwab, I live in Ironton, and I'm here to address the ordinance that Nate Klein, who I commend, brought this up about the establishment of requirements for these group residential homes and stuff. And I was down at the mayor's office twice this week, and there's three houses that I gave them the address for on Twelfth Street that have not been registered. Susan told me yesterday, they have not registered. And I noticed that Mr. Cramblett, our mayor, gave, extended the registration for those a month to February the twenty-third, and it ran out yesterday. And anyway, I'd like to see that addressed. And, you know, I'd like to find out more information of what you're all going to do with this ordinance, twenty-one sixty-six, as far as, you know, code enforcement, because, you know, it's really taking over our town, these homes are. We're getting so many people that aren't even from Lawrence County, from Ironton, that are moving into these homes. It's like these, it's unbelievable anymore. I had a house, I used to live down on Etna Street, four-fourteen Etna Street. That was a group home for girls going to Phoenix down there. And it's a single-family home and we could count fourteen girls coming out of that home in the morning and arriving there every evening, fourteen girls. It's a three-bedroom house, according to the auditor's site, looking it up on the auditor. It's a three-bedroom house with a bath and a half. And you could sit there and count fourteen girls coming out of there and going in there in the evening. Now, how, how's that possible? I mean, you know, at the time, it was five for a family, and I understand now it's three. So, you know, it's really out of hand in Ironton. And I think you all, according, I can see where Nathan addressed this, and I really commend him for that. And, you know, this has to be addressed. You know, you have these facilities in Ironton now, and you have, you have county officials, elected officials, that are involved in these. And that's, to me, is a conflict of interest, and that needs to be addressed. You have county employees at the courthouse that are involved in it, and that needs to be addressed. This is a conflict of interest. And they're working for the citizens of Lawrence County and Ironton. And, you know, we should have, we should come first, you know, this, that is truly a conflict of interest. And anyway, the addresses, if you want them, I can give them to you, they're on Twelfth Street. It's twenty-six twenty, twenty-six eighteen, and twenty-six thirty-nine. And anyway, I know Susan told me they haven't registered as of yesterday.
Okay, Mr. Schwab, I appreciate your concern, I have some same concerns. I would like to say that I believe those two ordinances passed unanimously by council. I think we all agree that this needs to be dealt with. We also allotted funding to have a, an enforcement officer hired on the police department in order to address these issues and check what homes that get a complaint like this. That being said, you know, council cannot direct employees, we are here to appropriate funding for ordinances like this and to pass legislation. I believe personally that council has done everything in our power to give the city the tools to enforce these ordinances.
Okay, I mean, yeah, that's what I understand, that they're going to try to hire a code enforcement officer. And that's been the problem with Ironton for several years now, we don't have an engineering department, we don't have a code enforcement officer, and we haven't had one for years. And Susan told me yesterday, she said, I don't have the time to go out there and do that. And I know that she's over code enforcement. So, you know, there's, you know, I'm glad you're going to address it because it really needs to be addressed.
Don't necessarily agree with some of that, but, you know, we came together as council and...
Well, that's what I, I was told that yesterday.
Pass this legislation and give, not just pass legislation with no teeth behind it, pass legislation to where, hey, we're going to give you the tools to use and we're going to give you an extra officer that can go out and enforce these tickets. But because what happened previously was, we were asking people, Mr. Seitz, God bless his soul, he was going out and writing citations, now he was deputized. So, what was happening was, he was writing tickets, but they weren't getting to the court. So, what we did with this legislation was skip the process. We've now got a police enforcement officer that can, that is deputized, that can write the ticket, take it straight to court.
So, you have somebody that's going to be a code enforcement officer on this?
I haven't been updated on if we've hired him or not. Mayor, have we, where are we at in that process?
Yeah, to clarify a little bit, yes, so Susan is over building and zoning, but this officer supplements.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know how busy, you know, it's overwhelming for Susan down there.
Yeah, she's got her hands full with that. But the thing with a code enforcement officer, as I reported in the last meeting, we're down two police officers already, so when they created the third position, we're now down three police officers. And we're testing next week, or the tenth civil service, to hire additional officers. And once we have that, we can take the one off the road, we're going to dedicate to that. But we are kind of doing, I was going to give a little bit of update on where we're at with dealing with this ordinance at the moment. You know, the little people that had already registered and comparing it with who we already know hasn't as well. And I'm sure that is probably a lot of...
It's just like, as far as this zoning, how many houses can you have on a certain block or in a certain area? Even in R-two or R-three zoning, there has to be a limitation, you know, where people are living in these, in this, you know, these areas where, you know, you ought to, there ought to be some kind of zoning where there's a limitation on how many houses can be in that area.
Well, that's what this was put in because council, they do still, we still do have to address zoning.
Yeah, well, okay, that's what I was told.
The reason why the zoning was put in place is to stop this, stop...
Well, you know, Chris, there's so much money, there's so much government money involved in this, and everybody wants to get on the bandwagon because there, it's so, it's, there's so much money. It's like the government's turned on the faucet and, and, you know, everybody wants to stand there or they want, they want part of it, they want, they're part of it. Even our own county officials, elected officials and stuff, people like that, and that's a conflict of interest, in my opinion.
I would agree with that, and I also think if they would put as much funding towards prevention as to fixing an issue, it would help out a lot.
And as far as getting other people from other areas and bringing them into Ironton to rehabilitate them and, but these, that, my niece Rebecca Woods brought this to my attention Sunday because she was woke up at eleven-thirty on Saturday night and she thought it was gunshots, and what it was, at two, at twenty-six twenty, they had a fire in the backyard. At eleven-thirty, twelve o'clock, and they were throwing stuff in the fire. And she didn't even know it was a, and the guy, she went over the next morning, I understand, you can talk to her. She, she said she went over and, and she didn't know, she said, she didn't know if there was anybody in the house. There was a door open on one, she knocked on a door, and the guy that came to the doors told her that it was a sobriety house. And the one next to it, she said, is the house next to it, is there anybody in that? She said it's, he told her that was, there was people living in that, that was the same thing. And anyway, you know, nobody in these areas even know who the people are in these houses.
That's an issue, Craig's got it.
Go ahead.
Oh, I had a couple things, he actually addressed a few of them. I was going to tell you that we're not, I mean, what Chris said is accurate. We, we've done everything on our end because we can operate the day-to-day operations in the city. We've done everything on our end to give, to give the city the tools. But as Sam said, they're short of the police department, and any of those police officers can write a ticket. Any of them could do that. They don't have to be a code enforcement officer to write a ticket if they're violating... They don't have to be a code enforcement officer to write a ticket if they're in violation of a code.
Yeah, but how, let me, okay, go ahead, Craig.
I'm getting to the point. But our police chief tells us, we're so busy dealing with all the other ramifications, going to overdoses and bonfires at 11:30 at night, that we don't have time to deal with the code enforcement part of it unless we have an extra officer. So, we're trying our best, they're trying their best to get the personnel that we need to do that. But in the meantime, if there's stuff like that going on, you can call the police and tell them that there's a nuisance at 2620, and they put that in a file. And after two violations, they start getting citation. So, the police chief keeps a list of chronic nuisance properties. And if these properties are chronically a nuisance, in addition to the group home thing, you also have nuisances. If they're overdosing and laying out on the sidewalk and somebody's calling an ambulance, if the police show up and they're fighting in the front yard and they're arresting people, if they're letting off fireworks and having bonfires at 11:30 at night and the police show up, that should be, according to our police chief, that should be in her file.
Yeah.
If they're called to those homes over and over and over again about a nuisance, then that should be in their file. One other thing, and then I'll quit.
No, go ahead.
At the very beginning, you said we didn't have an engineering department. We actually do have an engineer for the city. His name's Kevin Wood, and we contract with IBI Engineering Group. Just, that was just a point of clarification.
Okay. I understand now. But, you know, we don't have, we don't really have an enforcement, code enforcement officer, it seems like. And even, you know, like these houses up here, they might tell you there's, now it's supposed to be a family, you know, there should be no more than three people in one single-family house. Well, you know, they could tell you that, there might be six living there, so you have to be able to go in there, you know, get a cert, you know, get a warrant, go in there and check and see how many people in there. Like I said, we, living down on Etna Street, there was, you know, up to 14 girls coming out of that house in the morning. And that's ridiculous for a single-family house in an area where, you know, there's other people trying to live. I mean, you know, it's really gotten out of hand in Arton, and it's not only gotten out of hand in Arton, I've heard it's the same way in South Point. You know, our surrounding municipalities are in the same, you know, they're in the same boat as we are. And that's, that's, that falls back on our county commissioners and people like that. They're the ones that ought to be stepping in, taking care of some of that stuff. So, you know, the city, I think the city needs to get together with the county and coordinate some of this stuff.
But you mentioned that, Tom.
I'll address that in communications. I got something for you in communication. But one thing I would like to add is there is a page on the city's webpage for complaints or concerns, and you fill that out. So, you have documentation, because it holds the city accountable, it holds us accountable, it holds you accountable, also in addition to contacting the police in issues like that. So, there's, there's a, code enforcement is a tag, it's a tag, what do we call it?
We did have a code enforcement officer, and he passed away in December. And now, like he was saying, he couldn't write a criminal citation, so we've put the police department person in there. It's just where they're staffed on the street already. It's kind of hard to, but if you call, like Craig was saying, like, that's something we can handle. What this ordinance does, it's not going to be able for us to go in, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, and tell them, no, you're in violation now, because if that was passed, there's a grandfather clause.
Well, for people who were already there before, it's no more than five unrelated...
That's what I understood. It was no more than five.
Okay.
Yes.
And anything that's created after the ordinance is limited to three, because they reduce the number. That's what a definition of family is.
With certain people involved in this, you guys are going to run up into a lot of, you know, turbulence over, because there's people involved in this that are in your county, that are county officials. So, you're going to run into a lot of, you know, things over this. And, but, you know, and I understand that Rebecca, Becky went down on Sunday morning and went to file a complaint, and the policeman told her that, you know, that she should have called the night before. I don't know if she actually filed.
Yeah, but I would call at the time.
But I told her she shouldn't have went ahead and filed one anyway.
She, well, she should have, and she should also make sure, because I'd like everybody to know, everybody in attendance, everybody online, whatever, to get on the city's webpage and use the enforcement tab, because it's right there. You know, we give the information, it holds the city accountable. You're able to voice your concerns in term leisure, but also, we need you to, if you have concerns like that, and bonfires in the backyard, it needs to happen at that time so we can actually have documentation of it, because that's, that would be one instance of a nuisance.
Okay.
So, you know, two other times, hey, we are able legally to enforce the nuisance law.
Okay.
In short, just to answer what you started off with, is what we're doing with the ordinances. Like I was stating, we've taken what has registered, we're comparing it with what we identified as what we believe to be those, and making sure that we make sure they're registering. With that, we don't have the officer yet to do it, but we're getting everything ready to where we can do as much as we can until we have that officer to physically be, you know, making sure that it's being complied by.
Okay.
There's been some confusion. There was, I don't know if it came from city council or someone on council, there was a letter sent out to a lot of them, asking, and it asked for the residents' names and things like that. So, a lot of them's like, well, I can't legally do this, but that was incorrect. We're fixing that too, and making sure they know that all they have to do is tell us the data that's on the form that we have.
Okay. Could you all address the houses up on 12th Street and get back with us? Can I, can I get, you know, some kind of input on that?
Yeah, I wrote the numbers down to make, they probably already on the list.
Now, Susan told me yesterday that...
They're not. Okay, so I'll add them to the list and we'll make sure that those people are registering too.
Well, if they're registering, they're, actually, if they're not registered, they're not in compliance of this.
Right.
And they should be, you know, they shouldn't even have those homes in operation.
$10,000 today.
Exactly. Well, they shouldn't even be in operation, period. They haven't, they haven't registered.
That's what we put a hefty fine in there daily. So, if they're not in compliance today, it's $10,000.
So, in the letter, it will be telling them what they've accrued, and then also, but we can't shut them down, from my understanding, if they were there before this ordinance started. Like if they just...
If they're not registered, we...
If they're not registered, then you can shut them down.
Is that true?
Mike has it.
Yeah, the ordinance requires even...
Yeah, that they have to be registered. They have to be registered.
Shut them down if they were there before. You can't, I don't think we can shut them down.
But I mean, if...
Only new operations or new homes that...
Well, that's what, if they're not registered, then they're a new operation, and they have to be registered, and there's a moratorium on houses.
They're old and they got...
Okay, but...
Do you know, these three are owned or operated by the same entity?
Well, they're actually, they're owned by members of the same family, is what it is.
But someone's running a drug rehab there, do you know?
Well, one of the girls...
Well, we've got so many of them.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Well, actually, one of the girls that has the one house for sure, Elizabeth Bowden-Maine, she actually, she runs a rehab down here on, what is it, 4th Street, across from Wendy's there. I think it's one, it's, you know, one of those buildings.
One of the Ziegler King Building?
Yeah. And, but, you know, if they're not registered, then they should be, you know, it's, it's going to be considered a new business.
$10,000 a day if...
Yeah. And it ought to be considered.
By the letter of the ordinance that we wrote, if they're not registered.
Yeah, I just wanted, I'm Rebecca Wood. I'm his, he's talking about. The one is owned by Elizabeth Bowden. When I walked around, I knocked on her door, and the man who answered the door said there were eight men living there, and this was a sober living facility. He said the house next door that I looked up, and it's owned by Jessica Bowden or Bowden, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that name correctly.
Married to her brother.
I'm assuming that's her brother. And they, they've owned the house for a while, because they actually, I think, lived there. But I have just, we've just kind of noticed this crowd recently. Okay? And then I think there's another house that's on the corner of 12th and Latonia. Did you give them that address?
It's 2639.
And the name on that is Eugene and Lorraine Bowden. Now, she spoke, Elizabeth spoke with my neighbor, and my neighbor said, she told her she has four houses she's working on back there. So, I've located three that I believe are these homes. And again, the man that I spoke with confirmed to me that those two houses, the 26, what is it, 2620 and 2618 are those homes. And there's eight living in the one, four in the other.
Well, can we get on that? Because that's $10,000 a day.
Well, yeah, that's what, I mean, we're going to have...
Well, you need to...
But I don't know that they can...
It seems to me like they'd be considered new, they would fall under that...
My thing is...
If they're not registered, it's $10,000. I don't care if they've been...
Well, if they're not registered, then it's considered, you know, under this moratorium, they shouldn't even be open.
But this is a $10,000 fine every single day.
Yeah, that's the way I read it.
The moratorium just prevents any new places for the next year.
Okay.
So, no new ones.
So, as long as, if they were in business before, is what you're saying? If they were, they're operating a sobriety house or whatever before?
They still have to register.
But, but they're, they're subject to fine, but they're still able to go ahead and operate, is what you're saying?
If they comply with the zoning laws.
Okay. But like she said, the guy said there's like eight people in that one house.
Right. And where they didn't register, I'm just wondering how that qualifies them as a...
We also can't go back on the zoning law if they were there before that was put in, before the language was changed either, right?
Well, you can't.
Wait, no, you're saying, yeah, if there was five?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's more than five, there's...
Oh, okay. If it's in that right zone.
Well, that's zone two. That's, that's...
So, it's zone two?
Yeah, that's zone two.
So, well, go ahead.
So, I would argue that our legislation puts them in a position that they're hosed either way. If they, if they don't register, then they don't exist. And so, they're subject to our code enforcement, which is, which is three people unrelated living in that. If they do register and say, oh, we've been in business since 2008, then they have to pay the fine retroactive to the date that it was enforced. So, I think that our legislation puts them in a position that they're hosed either way if they don't register. And if they, if they haven't registered by now, they should already either be getting the fine, or they don't exist.
Well, and the city needs to go in there, and with this zoning, you know, like zone two or three, they need to specify how many houses in a certain area can be in. I don't care if they're Neco houses, or rehab houses, or sobriety houses, or whatever.
Nate, we were working on addressing that. Nate, go ahead.
Tom, one of the things, I spoke to the mayor earlier about, City of Porchwood has hired a consulting company out of Cincinnati that specializes in writing, rewriting, addressing, and zoning for cities. The City of Porchwood is currently using them. I asked him to reach out to them, see if they could come and speak to us about how to address our zoning concerns, because the moratorium kind of puts a halt on it until we can find some long-term solutions to these issues. And I personally would like to spend a little bit of money upfront to make sure that we're getting it right, and we're addressing a lot of the issues that other cities of our size and other cities in the state are running into also. So, I think, you know, we have to come up again with some long-term situations to address some of these issues. And I voice, you know, I'm with you on a lot of your concerns. This isn't going to happen overnight. I appreciate you bringing this concern to light, because it needs to be, because, you know, for this purposes. But, you know, it's not going to happen overnight. We need some time to fix it. That's why we put this in place. And we're trying our best to serve our citizens and to keep our neighborhoods, you know, safe where we want it, so.
Well, if you want people to stay in Arton and be, you know, good, you know, and raise their kids and their grandkids and stuff, this has to be addressed.
Like, we were in the process. If you would email me your number, if you would email me my, please visit the city's website and email me your phone number, and I will keep in touch with you with any updates. Because we are actively working on this, so I promise you that. So, and there's a few things we've got to get to, but this is one of the top issues that we're dealing with right now. And we are, we are, you know, determined to address it in the best possible way for residents.
Okay.
So, I appreciate your concerns.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, appreciate your time.
Please email me, and I'll get in touch with you with phone calls.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, guys. We have any other items to discuss tonight? Mayor?
Took care of that, Mark. As you can see, I'm up here without a mask, we're going to lift the mask mandate in the city buildings as of today. Following back on the last meeting, Councilman Perry brought up a few homes that they thought were going to be recovery homes or properties. Those are what will be, or what can be, pending funding. CAO project, Depot Square, Phase Three. So, it will not be a recovery home as it was brought up as the other night. Just talking a little bit about paving. We're meeting with CAO tomorrow, discuss what part, what pots of money might be coming available now that we're not going to be available through the Metropolitan Planning Commission that we're in, which puts us in a good place. We're the only Ohio community that's a part of that organization. So, we have our executive meeting with them, and then Kevin and I will be meeting with them after that, to discuss what, you know, opportunities we have with what's coming. We're just kind of waiting on Congress to determine what grants are going to be available for that. The first and pine paving project will be ready to bid here in March, end of March, beginning of April. The filter media replacement project at the water plant is in progress. If you remember, that's the last part to close out the water treatment plan pond that was taken out a couple of years, three years ago. So, received the SBA tower agreement. It's been approved by our solicitors to go ahead and execute that contract. So, should have another update at the next meeting or prior to, depending on where things go after that. Last thing is, I have someone here tonight. I've been working heavily with Todd Schreier. Todd's a resident in Russell, Kentucky, working on a lot of projects around the tri-state, and wanting to bring some entertainment to our downtown district. And I was just going to let him introduce himself and talk about what we might be working on.
Don't hold it against him across the river. Is that fair? Okay. Hey, council, my name is Todd Schreier. I live at 329 Riverside Drive in Russell, Kentucky. So, I'm right on the river, so every morning when I wake up, the first thing I see is Ironton. So, talk about object permanence and top of mind recognition. So, Ironton is, I'm originally from Tampa, and so I always used to eat sushi every day, and I found the depot and fell in love at first bite. Ironton is, you know, I've moved all over the country, I've consulted all over the country, and I think Ironton is one of America's best-kept secrets. But why is it a secret? My wife and I, we own a firm called Schreier Group, we're a consulting firm. We've done real estate development, hospital management, pharmaceutical consulting. And when we moved here locally, we brought our son here, because my wife was born and raised in Russell. And she used to teach all the band camps in Ironton many years ago. And so, I mean, that's kind of loose ties, I'm trying to plug, connect to the room, I guess. One of the things that we decided at the end of 2021 is, what brings us joy? What do we enjoy doing? So, all the things that were tedious and headache, and, I mean, everyone has headaches in their job. Fortunately for us, we cut out most of them. And so, the two lanes that we focus on is real estate development. We have done two flips in Ironton where we get houses, we really do them right. New plumbing, electrical, LVP, stainless appliances, granite, you name it, like, we really go the extra mile. We're not lipstick on a pig, we're not slum lords. We go above and beyond, and I charge more for my rentals because we want to raise the bar. I don't need to nay-say our competitors, I want to push it up. So, I'm always looking. And, you know, I'm learning the Ironton market a little bit, and there's a lot of movement and a lot of movers and shakers over here. And right now, my tail's tucked between my legs and I'm on the other side of the river. But what I am really focused on today is, is... But what I am really focused on today is, is entertainment. I don't know how many of y'all are parents here in the audience, but every now and then, we get a date night and we get a sitter and that's pretty exciting. Unfortunately, you know, we went over, we went to Ironton and it's like, whoa, whoa, we have three hours, what are we gonna do? And, you know, there, it, it fell a little short that evening and, and that was concerning. My wife and I have been working and you'll read in the press probably in the next couple of days, it's already been out for, we're opening a concession bar inside of Camp Landing. We're, we're working very closely with the camps at Camp Landing and opening some facilities there and some other businesses that, I'll let the press announce it, but we, we have active entertainment opening. In Flatwoods, Kentucky, we have purchased a building and we're putting a five-room escape room. Again, active entertainment to engage, you know, our professionals, our youth, our church groups, just people who want to get out and do stuff. Like, we can all just put our cell phones down for a little bit and engage with each other and that's what brings me here tonight. I have spent more hours than I like to admit casually driving around, so if you see a Subaru with Kentucky plates in downtown Ironton, you got me. And I'm trying to study, so I came Saturday night, I parked my car and I counted cars. And I'm like, what's the traffic flow, what's the ingress, regress, what's the congestion mitigation dispersment authority have to say about our, our town of Ironton? One of the things I can tell you from the, not just myself and my own funds, but for the groups I represent that invest with me as partners. I mean, you guys kind of hit it earlier, it's parking. If we were to have, if I were to go ahead and, and we looked at some buildings, some five thousand square feet, some sixteen thousand square feet, both those projects are within our scope. We can have events and venues where we have two, three hundred people having a, a safe, clean and good time. Where do they park, where do they go? Now, the nine to five traffic flow you're talking about with your meters, that really doesn't affect what I'm trying to do too much because I'm looking for nighttime entertainment. So when you all take off whatever you're, you know, you're during the day jobs and you go and relax, like, hey, you know what, it's Saturday, what are we gonna do? When I, the greatest injustice living in this community that I feel is we work so hard for our money and when it's time to go enjoy ourselves, what do we do? We're going to Lexington, we're going to Cincinnati, we're going to Huntington. We take all of our dollars and we're throwing in other towns. Why? You know, this is an income tax based community. I believe in creating jobs and creating opportunities, it's what I've done my entire career. So I'm active, I've been working with the mayor and working with some other people in the city. I'm trying to find, actively trying to find locations. I would like to bring entertainment that is not just something for locals to pour in, I mean, respectfully, I might shoot myself in the foot, but hey, y'all don't know me from across the rivers, it doesn't matter. There's enough places with pool tables and dartboards, there's enough dives around here, we don't need any more of those. I want to bring, I want to raise the bar and bring a higher scale of entertainment that everyone can enjoy. I would like to create something that I can get in my car, drive right over here within five or ten minutes and I can have something that people from all around the tri-state want to come do. What you all have, your infrastructure in downtown Ironton specifically is unbelievable. I mean, if, if the right movement and the right traction is captured, these historic buildings, and I've gotten the privilege to, to view a few of them, wow, there's some amazing history here. I mean, from the mob in old Chicago and all the brothels and all the craziness, that should be celebrated, we should pay homage to it, but we should celebrate the future. There's so much opportunity for, for tech jobs, for, for, you know, just really great entertainment and, and that's what we're looking to bring. What am I asking from the council? Nothing. I don't need any money, I don't need donations, I mean, I'm a capitalist. So through and through, the only thing I would like to ask is for you to understand, if you're talking, I heard some talks about bringing new businesses into this town and bringing people who want to buy these houses and want to do them right and, and give quality affordable homes to families where when you buy it, you're not like, well, in two years I need a new roof, oh, the plumbing shot, or someone cut all the copper out. Like, doing things right the first time, that's what my team and I are looking to do. We have an active, a pretty darn good track history across the river, right across, and even in, in here, there's some houses and addresses I could give. I honestly, I forget the addresses, but I can send them over to you and pass them around, some before and afters that we do. The things I am concerned about is if you guys are talking about scaling for growth and you want to draw people in, like, as an investor, I'm concerned about some infrastructure. I mean, it's just being very blunt. You know, there are some amazing opportunities out there to embrace some grants and some T-one infrastructure through Windstream and I would love to see how I can bring value, how I can be part of the solution. Because in any relationship, you have to make a deposit before you make a withdrawal. And so I'm trying to learn a little bit more about Ironton, what we can do together and what you guys want. What I don't want to do is spend all of our time, our resources and our finances to answer, have answers for questions that no one's asking, to solve problems that no one says is a problem. So what I experienced as someone who looks at Ironton, who, it's like a four-minute drive from my house to here, is what are we doing tomorrow night? When, when the kids are out of school and we want to unwind and I get a sitter, where am I gonna go? And why not Ironton? I, I think there's a turning point coming, I think there's a lot of positive momentum. And I, I think, I mean, the parking thing for me and for my family, that want to invest and want to bring some amazing things and you'll be able to see a few of them in about three or four weeks at Camp Landing, if you want to see the quality of work we do. But we, we really, I mean, my suggestion would be talking about in, in executing a, a relative and a, a permanent parking solution when it comes to garages. You know, metering and temporary spaces, I mean, I've, I've been a part of, this is not my first city I've done this to, okay? I've been a part of these conversations. There are some funds out there, there's grants out there, there's programs out there, you need some permanent solutions. I, I mean, I haven't read any of the, you know, any of the things you have, I'm just here talking about, let's have some fun on Friday nights and we do axe throwing, we do escape rooms, we do arcades, we do a bunch of really cool stuff. You know, one of the concepts we'd like to bring over to Ironton potentially is an axe throwing bar and we can be part of the world axe throwing league. So literally, our, our citizens of Ironton, the people here, you all can compete and go on tournaments nationally through ESPN and you can, you don't have to drive to Huntington, you don't have to drive to Lexington or Cincinnati to qualify, you can do it here, people will come here. But the problem, my question to you guys is, if I put the, the time, the effort, the dollars to draw the crowd, what can we do as a partnership to make sure patrons have a place to park? Because, I mean, if we got more than thirty people in there and they're walking more than two or three blocks at night in the rain and the snow, we might have an issue. And so that's my only real concern is we're, we're actively looking for the right buildings, I think I have two of them found, I'm open to more. But that's kind of where I'm at and I think that's why I, you know, was asked to come tonight.
Yeah, plus it's just the, the aggressive timeline, I mean, it's just kind of happening a lot quicker than the way things typically happen. We're looking at doing something this year, so.
Yeah, I offered on, on these two building spots, I told the gentleman, like, cool, write it up. You know, I had an opportunity across the, the river and I walked in a property and I said, alright, what do you want for it, we negotiate on the spot, we close in two weeks. So if the right opportunity comes up, like, my team and I are ready, willing and able to go ahead and execute and bring something, like, something amazing to iron, something that we all celebrate, that we'll all see each other socially and we can have a good time at. And that's what I want, really want to bring down here, you know, I want to, this should be the fun place to go. It really should. It's not just a, it doesn't have to be just a bedroom community. This can be something like, hey, let's all, you know, the kids at Morehead, you know, let's drive to Ironton this weekend because they all go home on the weekends anyways. But yeah, I mean, I'm happy to answer questions, he has my contact info, but I just want to introduce myself in case you see a forest green Subaru awkwardly driving in the city, that's me. So, thanks for having me, guys.
Questions? Personally, I appreciate the time and you putting in the research on your own time and that, that's what it takes. To be successful, you counting cars like I said, that's, that's big time, so I appreciate you putting time and effort into our community. I also want to, want to let you know that we've came up and, yeah, I understand parking may be a thing, but I think personally, our parking situation is more of parking spaces as to timeliness of parking. So, and we are actively working on drastically improving the amount of spaces we have within this area. Now, one of them is with the county courthouse, so that, that should take care of itself. But I, within the city's, you know, downtown area, we're looking into multiple things and one should be getting kicked off, Nate, I mean, ASAP, I mean, we're trying to get this, this, the first phase of it, I would say, done immediately. Because the spring, we have the Dora initiative, I'm sure you're familiar with Dora, downtown, that's where refreshment areas, so we've got that being kicked off in the spring for any participating businesses. So I, I think we're actively trying to fix the parking situation.
Okay.
So I, I do want to, you know, rest assured that that is being, it will be addressed.
Sure.
Maybe not in certain ways, but it, the amount of parking spaces will drastically increase.
Yeah, and one of the things that we've been looking into as well is embracing live music and, and actually being able to pull talent and, because there's, it's, it's kind of awkward with the venues right now because you have some dive bars, then you have like the Paramount and there's not a lot of in-betweens. And so if someone wanted to do like a show for a hundred, two hundred people, also I have resources with some actors and some people who are used to running comedy clubs, so bringing like a comedy club could be in Ironton. So if we do get draws and, and we have two, three hundred peoples on Saturday night, I just want to make sure, like, we don't build this magnificent, awesome thing and spend a substantial amount of money and then like, I have to spend the rest of my time with this business correcting the stigma that's hard to get into. And, and before we make those kind of investments, like, that's, I mean, I'm just being blunt, I have nothing to gain or lose here, but I just, I need to learn more, we need to learn more about each other. And, yeah, the parking thing, I mean, that's really the only like hiccup. You know, as far as Ironton, I want to bet on Ironton. You know, I love to go ahead and get a building and put some really nice apartments above here too and make this a walkable city. My wife and I lived in downtown Portland for quite a bit and, you know, we paid three hundred dollars for a parking spot a month and never used our car because we just walked everywhere and Ironton is so walkable and it's so cool and it, it should be celebrated. And hopefully it can be part of the solution for that. Sure.
So I know that your biggest need sounds like it's, it's parking.
Sure.
And a, and a permanent parking structure. The, the two places that you've identified as potential business opportunities, do they have adjacent areas where, where you could raise a building and we could possibly look into helping raise a building and do easements so that you can create a parking garage? Because our pace is a snail's pace.
It is.
If your pace is faster, and I keep thinking about the progressive commercials, like, can you imagine how much this place brings in parking? I keep thinking about it, so like, I mean, my, my question to you would be, is that something that you've looked at? At creating your own parking solutions if we can help you in that endeavor?
And that's, that's, that's a fun thing about being a capitalist, is like, I just, I don't have to work anyone's pace with my own. Parking, like, creating, buying and building a parking garage is not very profitable. I, I have grant writers in my team, you know, and so when we, when we look at a city, I'm not looking to buy one building or do one business. That doesn't make sense, like, where it makes sense is when you get several going at the same time. Because if we're gonna go ahead and say, alright, we're gonna draw these people here, and then it's, it's throughput. So after, let's say I have an escape room, okay, you go for sixty minutes, you puzzle, puzzles, clues and riddles, you do the thing, you escape. You're excited, cool, well, what do you want to do now? Because they're jacked up, they're like, we need to go eat and have something to drink, and they want to calm down and they want to unwind. So I can throughput them from one venue to another to another. So as I'm strategizing, I'm looking, I'm not looking at one building, I'm looking at the big picture. Like, how can I go ahead and say, now that you've gone here after the game, why don't you go over here? And then maybe you're over there, you want to get relaxed, at the end of the night have a cup of coffee over here. So I'm, I'm looking at that, so I have a very specific targeted area. There's two areas in Ironton that I find very attractive, that we are ready, willing and able to move on immediately. And those areas, I mean, the rumors are that there's talks of a parking garage going in that area. But then again, like, we're in the city council building, government's not known for being fast. So, and as far as, like, as long as I know it's going to happen, we don't mind sharing those growing pains because it does take the whole village. Like, in order for whatever the vision of Ironton, each of you individually, from your political stances and collectively have and even people in the room, like, whatever that is, it, it's not just the same people living in Ironton. You can't just keep pulling from the residents and overtaxing them, you need to bring in new money. Here we are, let's dance. So when it comes down to it, when we, we start bringing these businesses, yeah, like, it'd be cool if I wanted to go ahead and have, apply for a beer and wine license or a liquor license, like, knowing that, that can be encouraged if we're not, you know, we're gonna bring something that we can be proud of. You know, we're not looking to bring a lot of trouble, you know, we'll pay for our own security. Hopefully the tax laws and liquor laws, you'll hire even more on the police force. I mean, you identified a problem, the problem is, we need some more people in the police force, we're short-staffed, our code enforcement, rest his soul, passed away. So how can we part of, part of the solution and hopefully some of these businesses can do that? But I'm telling you, like, when we open a business, no one says, man, I hope I have ten percent occupancy in my business today, I want to sell out. You know, I want to have things packed, I want people to have a good time, I want to be able to pay three, four thousand dollars for some great musical talent and it makes sense, you know, for people. And that's the only hiccup, I mean, I hear, I hear everything you're saying, I agree with most of it. But, like, in order for people, I think, to really take the plunge, because a lot of other cities, if I, if I come into a city and say, hey, I want to make your housing nicer and I want to bring you awesome fun businesses to draw people in, every, every city is like, great? But there's a difference between Ironton and other cities I go to, that I'm actively doing this in, is that I look at you every morning when I wake up. And this is where I take my son, walking down the streets and you enjoy your farmer's markets and my dad and take him to the depot two, three times a week. You know, man, I love the depot. I don't, I'm, I'm not getting paid to talk and say that either, I do love the depot.
You're making me hungry.
I'm hungry, I'm looking at the clock, I'm like, I'm gonna go some sushi. So I'll continue working, I'll continue doing my due diligence, you may see me around town. But, um, man, Ironton is just, Ironton deserves it, man. Ironton deserves people coming in and recognizing it and really injecting some cash into it. And, you know, my wife has this saying that she lectures me, does it need to be done and are we the ones to do it? Does it need to be done, does Ironton need to have these downtown buildings, like, respected, renovated and celebrated? I mean, I'm seeing a lot of heads shaking yes, because I agree. And are we the ones to do it? I think we're the ones to start it. Because, I mean, everything starts with a first step. I just, the only thing I ask is in your deliberations and future meetings and whatever you're doing, is that understand that people are watching and people are willing and ready and able to invest. But if you're talking about bringing that, I mean, there's so, I'm not gonna waste too much more time, but there's so much more, like, when it comes to, alright, here's entertainment, now I need to go ahead and start recruiting jobs because if you get a twenty or thirty or forty thousand square foot building, we run T-one, we start recording tech jobs, we start bringing high-paying jobs here, there's just a lot to it with the economic development of it. I just happen to enjoy the entertainment part of it, because it's fun, you know, I like throwing axes, I like doing escape rooms, I like laughing and being jumpscared, it's cool. So, but no, I, I appreciate the audience tonight, I appreciate you guys hearing what I have to say. Like, again, I'm not afraid of very large rehabs, I mean, my house took seven and a half months on Riverside Drive, no one touched it for fifty years, the house I purchased and we live in now. Fifty years, the only thing was the sticks around it. And we spent seven and a half months, redid all the foundation and brought it back to its amazing state. And there's a lot of buildings, I walked some buildings and there's some history, some speakeasy stuff, some boiler room doors that I can tell, maybe even for different sort of businesses fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, it's just so cool. But yeah, and I, I hear the concerns here in Ironton tonight. And yeah, I mean, just, everyone deserves to be heard, everyone's to be listened to. Because I want to make sure their needs are met too, because those are the patrons I want, I want the people to celebrate the city. I also want to be able to draw people in here too. So again, thank you guys for your time tonight, I'm super grateful. Yeah, and as, it, it'll start coming out in the press, my wife says I'm not allowed to talk about things, so I'll just, I'm gonna shut up now. But yeah, in the next two weeks, I mean, I'll share them with you as they come out in the independent or wherever. And then, yeah, check out our establishments, so I'm just some guy behind a podium tonight that you've never heard of. But come see it for yourself, like, see if it's worth having and if it is, let's keep talking. So thank you guys for having me tonight.
I appreciate you and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Sounds good, but thank you.
Good, any other audience participation? Okay, on to communications. I have one. Last week I sent to two emails, because I was given two different emails, two emails to each county commissioner, Deanna Holliday, Freddie Hayes and Colton Copley, inviting them to the Ironton City Council meeting for tonight to address some issues that, that citizens have, have had. I invited them to come and speak and maybe fill us in as council members on some issues. I received one return email and that was from Commissioner Copley. I received one return email and that was from Commissioner Copley and he said he is out of the country. I then extended another invitation to the meeting on the 10th and the 24th of March. I have not received a reply to that. But as of before I came in this meeting of the night, Freddie Hayes or Deanna Holliday did not respond to the invitation to the Ironton City Council meeting. I hope everybody can take it how you want to, but, yeah, so the Ironton police take note of that. Any other communications? All right, on to reports. I'm saying none. On to ordinances. Martha, would you please give ordinance 2207 second reading?
To adopt the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022 and declaring an emergency second reading.
Moving on to ordinance 2208. Would you please give that second reading?
An ordinance amending ordinance 2201 and declaring an emergency second reading.
Any discussion? Would you please give ordinance 2210 second reading?
An ordinance authorizing proposal JS 210301, amendment one to the ABM Facility Support Services Bundled Energy Solutions Project Agreement Number 87303895 through federal acquisition regulation number 552.283-114, use of federal supply scheduled contracts by non-federal entities, May 2019 and declaring an emergency second reading.
Moving on to resolutions. Would you please give resolution 2211 reading?
Resolution and declaration of official intent to enter into a lease purchase agreement, see attached exhibit A and declaring an emergency.
Resolution fails due to no action. On miscellaneous? Anybody Craig?
Moved it, received file made part of the message, January 22, city market plan.
Second, second, we have a motion by Craig and second by Jacob to receive January financials. Roll call, please.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
January financials have been accepted. Miscellaneous?
I'm gonna request the executive session.
Okay. Before we go to executive session, just one miscellaneous item. Spoke to late today, Joni Igoe and she's concerned about property 2554 McGoverney. She believes it's a rehab center, echoing some of the sentiments earlier. And also there's a car wash there that's out of order. It's overrun with trash. There's graffiti. And according to her, lots, lots of issues and she would like that to be checked out and see what can be done about that. Address 25? 2554 McGoverney. Mayor, can you add that?
I spoke to her yesterday, but she didn't tell me that. It was just about people blowing music and heard of the person who threw their shit.
Okay.
So I'll reach back out to her.
Thank you. Any other miscellaneous? Nate, who would you like?
I'll go to executive session, discuss property and personnel with the mayor and the solicitor.
Any action followed?
No action to follow.
Have a motion. Craig second. Second, motion by Nate, second by Craig, for executive session with no action to follow. Martha, would you please, roll call?
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
We are now entering executive session, everybody. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight. It was a little bit long, but sometimes you have those.